You're live, Ms. Chairman.
All right. I'd like to call this November 19th meeting of Greenville County Council to further. And we will begin with the con- indication offered by Chairman Curvin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let's all join together in prayer, if you will. Heavenly Father, we come before you today in humility and faith. We thank you for your having given us the many blessings that you've given us in our lives. We ask for your guidance and strength. Show us the way and fill us with courage and wisdom. Help us to remember your love and grace to be faithful in our service to the citizens of Greenville County. Give us the patience and understanding to face life's challenges with grace. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Amen. If you'll join me for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Our first item of business is public hearings. We've got three tonight. I'm going to call on Chairman Curvin to handle those public hearings, please.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Let me start. I need to read a quick statement. This is a special meeting of Greenville County Council. This meeting is being called to fill in a gap in our regular meeting schedule that was set out at the beginning of 2024. There are several finance and property-related items, along with previously scheduled public hearings, that need to be taken up at this evening in order to allow for the completion of this calendar year. So that's just kind of a formal statement on why we're having a public meeting tonight. So with that, I'll call on Chairman Curvin to start the public hearings.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item 4A, Greater Greenville Sanitation and General Obligation Bonds. This public hearing is being held for the purpose of receiving comments from the public regarding an ordinance finding that the Greater Greenville Sanitation District, South Carolina, may issue not exceeding $34 million general obligation bonds authorizing the Greater Greenville Sanitation Commission as a governing body of the Greater Greenville Sanitation District, South Carolina, to issue such bonds and other matters related there, too. Ms. Stone, do we have any citizens sign to speak on this matter?
Yes, sir. We have six citizens. The first one is David Davis. He is in opposition.
Okay. Thank you. Please come forward, and we look forward to hearing your comments. And we ask each speaker to give us their name and address for the record, please.
David Davis, 112 Riverview Drive, Greenville. What is Greater Greenville Sanitation's overall plan for the district taxpayers? What is this county council's part in this plan and to those taxpayers that elected them to office? Where is the transparency to build trust with the community by both this council and Greater Greenville Sanitation? The staggering $34 million bond issue before you is overwhelming to us in the tax, to us, the tax, the district taxpayers of Greenville County. This council is our only hope to ask tough questions about how this bond figure has grown to twice the estimated value of, estimated figures shared by both the director and others with us over the years. In 1976, Greater Greenville was designated a special purpose district to service the taxpayers in these districts. This definition by legislatures does not address creating a transfer station by the tax, on the taxpayer's dollar or selling their services to private sector as a business. How would such a profit be returned to the taxpayers involuntary investment? The bond amount is just under the threshold that would require a referendum ballot vote at the polls. Why? There have been many untruths told to us and you, this council, over the years, and they do not stop with this bond. Get the answers we, the taxpayers, deserve on what GGS five-year and 10-year plan include. Will others, will other counties be included to drop, to drop trash at this, once this is completed? Where will all this extra trash be disposed of? How does the private sector view this investment? Talk to them. Is twin chimneys in favor of this bill? In October, GGS Commission meeting, the director, in speaking to the four commissioners, stated that he did not care how much this bill costs the taxpayers of Greenville County, a very angry statement coming from a man who had made, who has had ample opportunity over the months and years to sell his ideas to this community, but instead chose this county council as his platform. Stop this bond issue now and ask more questions, especially about the dollars and the direction of these dollars. The trans, the transfer project is wrong for this location, wrong for the environment, and wrong for the taxpayers that put the bill. Please table this for more information to be understood. I thank you much.
Thank you. Please call the next speaker, Ms. Stone.
The next speaker is Ed Paxton, speaking in opposition to the proposed.
I'm Ed Paxton. A mailing address is 1 York Circle. I've lived in County Council, District 25, since before there was a county council. Counsel, this matter of an unneeded office building and a transfer house near the Saluda River for Greater Greenville is the stupidest thing I've seen before, counsel, since this gaudy development we're in here this evening. Why in this world are you even listening to such a humongous request for money, which can cost the customers of Greater Greenville 25% more money to move a ton of household waste to the landfill, is insanity? On the part of council, on the part of Greater Greenville, and council's finance committee, I yield the balance of my time to speakers who are not as angry as I am. And by the way, I got my tax bill today.
Thank you, Mr. Paxton. Please call the next speaker.
The next speaker is James Lee Torrey, speaking in opposition.
Good evening, James Lee Torrey, 441 Woodall Mountain Road, Pickens. Good evening, council members. My name is Jimmy Torrey, and I manage Republic Services, a business in Greenville County located at 684 Malden Road. The reason I'm speaking tonight is in opposition for the requested $34 million bond for Greater Greenville Sanitation. The reason I'm opposing simply comes back to the lack of transparency throughout the entire early, middle, and now bond process. Specific examples: Page four of the packet illustrates a millage increase for homeowners based on home values. What it doesn't provide is the additional millage that will be impacted to the commercial businesses within district. However, if you look at page six of your package, or page one of the first try-on advisors' discussion material, see bullet four, it says, and I quote, "payable from ad valorem tax without limitations as to rate, amount levied to all taxable property in the district." This means homes, businesses, and properties. Why has this not been clearly defined to a business and public within district? My first example is a ta, is a tax record from a business where the district was currently paying $8,387 annually. Based on the proposed millage increase, their new sanitation tax will increase to $11,032, which is an additional $2,645 per year, which is based on their current assessed value of 536, 563,000. My second example is an apartment complex, which is an assessed value of close to $1.5 million. They're current, currently paying Greater Greenville Sanitation tax of $22,231 annually. Based on the proposed millage, their increase, their increase to Greater Greenville Sanitation will increase to $29,244, which is a $7,013 annual increase. My final example illustrates a sanitation tax of $28,132 annually, but includes an annual sanitation fee of $24,408 for sanitation services. What I want to specifically point out is that this property owner pays the, a contractor for sanitation services, yet their tax notice includes a sanitation fee for services that are not being provided by Greater Greenville Sanitation. This is just one of many examples of property owners that pay a sanitation fee, yet Greater Greenville Sanitation does not offer the service. In closing, in my opinion, and the opinions of many of my colleagues within our industry, that the Greater Greenville Sanitation General Obligation Bond should not be approved today, nor in the future, until a clear and concise understanding of the financial impact to the residents and businesses within district, and/or a referendum allowing the taxpayers within the Greater Greenville Sanitation District to vote on accepting the tax for their property. Thank you for your time, consideration, for allowing me to speak tonight.
Thank you, sir. Please call the next speaker, please.
The next speaker is James Hoard, speaking in opposition to the proposed.
Good evening, councilors. My name is James Hoard, and I'm at 255 Gum Springs in District 17. I'm here to speak against the Greater Greenville Sanitation taking on $34 million worth of debt at the taxpayers' expense. This is a 31% tax increase for residents in the sanitation district. It is a 31% increase so that the commissioners can spend $34 million for a new headquarters. $34 million is one-third the cost of this complex we are standing in now, and that's just for one sanitation district. For over a decade, Greater Greenville Sanitation commissioners use tax funds to pay for lavish retreats and buy themselves costly gifts. They regularly had retreats at Grove Park Inn costing over $15,000 a time. A couple of years ago, they were told that they had to start having their retreats at the facility. Apparently, they now need to build their own Grove Park Inn here in Greenville. The commissioners also gifted themselves luxury items such as Rolex and Tag Heuer watches. Mr. Blunt, the majority of your district has to pay for Greenville, Greater Greenville Sanitation. How many of those taxpayers have Rolex watches? Mr. Shaw, how many of your constituents enjoy annual vacations at Grove Park Inn? I don't personally live in the Greater Greenville Sanitation District, and I'm glad I don't. I pay a private company, Kirby Sanitation, $300 a year to pick up my trash. If I lived in the Greater Greenville Sanitation District, my expense for the exact same service would be 30% greater. If this bond is approved, the difference would be 40% greater. Why should the residents in the districts represented by Mr. Mitchell, Mr. Fant, Mr. Shaw, Mr. Zoubalakis, and Ms. Seaman have to pay 40% greater, greater than residents in any other areas of the county? Why should residents in districts represented by Mr. Mitchell, Mr. Fant, Mr. Zoubalakis, and Ms. Seaman pay more than other residents in their same district? The bottom line is, they shouldn't have to. This is a costly decision, being rushed through at the end of the year, that forces residents in the sanitation district to have to overpay for a service they could get more competitively elsewhere. It is handing a $34 million check to commissioners that just two years ago were spending taxpayer dollars on Rolex watches for themselves, while employees who had served 20-plus years were given just a pizza party in thanks for their service. This is not a district with a history of responsible spending or accountability, which is clear in their inflated rates. What kind of analysis has been done of the cost structure as compared to municipal trash pickup and private haulers? Does Greater Greenville Sanitation stack up competitively against those other providers? How much due diligence did each county counselor have time to do before this vote was pushed through in a special-called meeting? I'm simply asking you to vote no and ask Greater Greenville Sanitation to come back with a more reasonable and responsible proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Hoard. Please call the next speaker.
The next speaker is Katie Rabe, speaking in opposition to the proposed.
My name is Katie Rabe. I live at 202 Riverview Drive, Greenville. For the better part of a decade, I have attended these meetings in order to preserve the natural surroundings, most importantly, the Saluda River, as well as to uplift a segment of the county that is often overlooked and greatly undervalued. For the most part, the county has heard us and supported us as citizens. That is why is it important, it is important for me to speak again tonight to oppose the building of the transfer dump station that Greater Greenville is seeking to build. Why? Because another entity attempted to do something similar, and you all voted it down. It was a terrible idea, and you said no. Second, we have spent two years creating a community plan to prevent this very thing from happening, and you all adopted it. Third, the plans were trained, changed drastically, they were declined, and then through the back door, the Board of Zoning Appeals, they were passed. Fourth, the original plan never included a transfer station, and the subsequent, subsequent addition has greatly increased the budget, which we, the taxpayers, will have to incur. Fifth, in my opinion, Greater Greenville should be a beacon of what, of innovation, of how are we going to dispose of waste as a growing place to live? We should be, we should be setting an example like we have for our downtown area, for livability, walkability, all of those things. We can't do that if we just keep buying more trucks and dumping everything and not recycling. It's, Greater Greenville, as it stands, is a system of, it's a good old boy network that is not moving into the future. And it is important for you to please stand with us as citizens, to continue to stand with us, to support us as taxpayers, and to vote this down. Thank you.
Thank you. Please call the next speaker.
The last speaker is Jared Davis, speaking in opposition to the proposed.
Good morning, or afternoon, evening. My name is Jared Davis. I live at 208 Riverview Drive in Greenville, South Carolina. I thank the council for allowing me to speak tonight on behalf. As a taxpayer, I'm very concerned about the potential consequences if Greater Greenville Sanitation is unable to repay this bond. If it happens, the county council will be forced to raise my taxes to cover the debt. Why should the council approve this? Is it worth noting that they're only asking for the maximum amount of $34 million to avoid voter referendum? Has anyone ensured that Greenville will not need a bailout from county council, which means, in the end, the taxpayers? Greater Greenville Sanitation was originally created to address the needs of West Greenville when it was not a desirable area, and downtown was unsafe after dark. However, West Greenville has since been transformed into a vibrant community where people want to live, work, and raise families. There's no longer a need for separate sanitation district. Greenville County Solid Waste, which you guys run, already operates at landfill and six convenience centers throughout the county for trash and recycling. Only people in the district have to use Greater Greenville Sanitation. Everybody else in the other districts, they get to choose who they use. I'm forced through my taxes because I can't get any other company to come in and pick up my trash. I also, I also run a trash company. And as a taxpayer, a person that lives, worships, and raises a family in Greenville County, I have to compete against a, a county-run company that is financed through my tax dollars. I compete against them. I don't know if that's fair. It's not fair. Why should I have to struggle to make payroll every week when they can afford Rolex watches that are paid through the taxes that I pay every year through my sanitation fee? It's not right. This $34 million is absolutely crazy. There's no reason that this county council should approve this bond and put that burden on the taxpayers. That's all I have to say. I sent all of you an email, a little bit more eloquent, so I appreciate your time, and I thank you very much, and please vote no.
Thank you very much. Ms. Stone, is that, was that the last speaker?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I declare this public hearing closed.
All right. Next item, 4B.
Yes, sir. Item 4B is a public hearing. This public hearing is being held for the purpose of receiving comments from the public regarding an ordinance to amend an agreement for the development of a joint county industrial and business park, 2010 park, of Anderson and Greenville Counties, so as to enlarge the park. Ms. Stone, has anyone signed up to speak at this public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Curvin, we have one speaker, Audrey Pasen, speaking in opposition.
Thank you very much. Please come forward.
Good evening. Audrey Pasen, 136 Old Altamont Ridge Road, Greenville, Paris Mountain. I always do this when I say Paris Mountain. It's kind of automatic. Gentlemen, I have a procedural question. I hope I'm not going to waste time on this. I thought I'd get to speak on felos because it was a second hearing. I understand your rule for special meeting is no public hearings. On the third reading, December 3rd, will there be a public hearing on the felos?
No, there will not.
I object to that very vehemently because that is actually-
Ms. Pasen.
-violation of statute. But I'm going to speak about this item I-
Okay.
-signed up for because I don't want them to bring me the pillows and the blanket tonight when I'm in the cell. So I will have to tell you that I'm here to be helpful, and I want to point out that these industrial parks, which are connected to felos, are really the root cause of unbridled development in Greenville. You cannot look at these things isolated. It's all connected. People get up here, they only talk about the tax effects and implications. I see way past that. What I see is the downstream consequences of all of this growth and development, which seems to be an addiction that is fed here. And so specifically, as to this particular industrial park, it will attract business together with the fela that relates to it, and that business is going to invest many, many millions of dollars. They'll build something beautiful on the land. They'll have equipment and electricity to run the equipment. They'll make a huge investment, and it'll be kind of sticky, which is my favorite fela agreement that I've ever seen. And, and Greenville will be stuck with it. And the interesting part of it is, what do we get for it? What do we get for it? We're supposed to get jobs. Well, who's filling those jobs? Do we have any unemployment left in Greenville County? Are all these felos and industrial parks taking care of our people's need for jobs? And are they training our people that need training, need rehabilitation because they're addicted, or they're dropouts from school, they're not functioning? What do we get for it, these industrial parks and felos? We get more workers coming from other places, a demand, therefore, for new construction. That includes dwellings everywhere, including affordable housing, extra dense to take here. Are those employees in that new felo-oriented industrial park that aren't meeting the federal standards for something that's not affordable housing? And these people drive cars, and they're on the roads, and they come here, and they need schools, and we're building an infrastructure driven by this thing, growth and development, and it's not sustainable, it's an addiction, and it is ruining quality of life. It is also offensive because Planning Commission is never involved in the decision of which land this park is going to be on. You are taking precious land, cherished land, and using it for growth and development, which works against us in a vicious cycle. When I speak on the next matter, I will tell you what statute provision you should be looking at. Thank you for your time.
Editorial comment, this property is located in Anderson County, not in Greenville County.
Thank you for that.
Thank you. Another speaker for this public hearing?
Yes, sir.
I declare this public hearing closed, Mr. Chairman.
Next item, 4C, please. And I'd be okay if you gave kind of a brief description of what we're doing here, so the gentle lady from Altamont Road understands what she's speaking about.
Well, under this, under state statute, multi-county industrial parks have to have more than one county. The county that the project is initiated in has to partner with an adjacent county. This case, it's in Anderson County, the next one's in Pickens County, and so by state law, they've asked Greenville County to sign on to it. Greenville County gets 1% of the, whatever Anderson or Pickens County gets, and that's all the obligation Greenville County has to expend on it. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This item 4C is a-
Mr. Chairman, if I just may, in defense of my constituent, I think she was talking about the larger felo issue, so thank you.
Okay, well, that's out of order, Ms. Speaker.
Yeah, I understand, I understand, but so are editorials on speakers.
The topic was, topic was on this particular item, sir.
Yes, sir, I understand, but so are editorials on speakers just coming up and speaking.
May we proceed?
Yes.
This public hearing is being held for the purpose of receiving comments from the public regarding an ordinance to develop a jointly owned and operated industrial business park in conjunction with Pickens County pursuant to South Carolina Code of Laws, 1976, Section 4-1-170, and so forth, as amended. Such an industrial business park to be, at the time of its initial development, geographically located in Pickens County, and to include certain property located at the intersection of Highway 123 and Highway 124, to provide for written agreement between Pickens County, providing for the expense, expenses of the park, the percentage of revenue, application, and distribution of fees in lieu of ad valorem taxes and matters related there, too. And Ms. Stone, has someone signed up to speak at this public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Curvin, we have one speaker, Audrey Pasen, speaking in opposition to the proposed.
Thank you, ma'am. Please come forward.
And thank you for the clarification about where the property is located. Is this particular item, no, not, doesn't touch any part of Greenville at all? That's very nice. There will be, of course, effects in Greenville, because people that work in Pickens also live sometimes in Greenville, and their children use our schools. I want to point out a provision that you should be looking at, and you vote on all of these things, and that is under the, the South Carolina Comprehensive Land Development Enabling Act. It is an amazingly beautiful prescription for doing very smart things. It is a planning commission ordinance, and the site particularly is 629340 and 629350. If you folks actually use that statute for all that it's worth, your planning commission would be very integrated with the-
Ms. Pasen.
...development association that-
Just a minute.
Please don't rule me out. It's a tangent, but you should be tolerant. I read your answers rules. You have discretion, and you abuse it with me every single time. I'm going to just finish this. These people vote-
No, you're not.
It's millions and billions of dollars.
Ms. Pasen, you are out of order. Please cut the mic. You're out of order.
This statute allows your planning-
Ms. Pasen, you are out of order. Because she's not talking about the item that, this is not about Pickens.
I'm on a tangent, and I'm speaking about industrial-
Okay. Ma'am.
And you abuse the script over and over again to, you-
Ma'am, you are out of order. Please sit down.
You deserve to be replaced, and I hope the next council-
Please sit down.
...approves you at the minute.
Please sit down, Ms. Pasen. You're out of order.
For your time.
You're out of order.
I'll continue on my Facebook page, which is called We Will Count the UDL, and I'll let you decide.
Thank you.
I declare this public hearing closed.
All right.
Mr. Chairman.
Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda.
Move or approve, Mr. Chairman.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next item, our ordinance is at second reading. First one up is Chairman Curvin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I need to make some comments regarding the first 10 items, all designated as CHQ 1 through 6. It's been publicly disclosed that this property is a, a 23-acre new development for five small industrial buildings ranging in size from 25,000 to 80,000 square feet, located near SC-TAC. Each, each of the buildings will have to have a felo, SSRC, provided to it, and also have to be put into a multi-county park. That's why there are five buildings, 10 items. The property requires over $1 million in sewer infrastructure, and the SSRC, if approved, would be applied towards, towards that cost, which would, the SSRC would come up to about $375,000 to go towards a million-dollar-plus sewer cost for the, for the project. So it's pretty, pretty tedious, but that's a preface that we couldn't consolidate these into one ordinance to present here at second reading. So we'll start with item 6A, Project CHQ. reading. So we'll start with item 6A, Project CHQ 1 Fee in Lieu of Tax. I move for approval at second reading, an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax agreement binding between Greenville County, South Carolina, and South Point Commerce Center LLC with respect to certain economic development properties in the county whereby such property will be subject to certain payments in lieu of taxes, including the provision of certain special source credits and other matters related there, too.
You've heard the motion. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Opposed.
Okay. The ayes have it. The ordinance is adopted at second reading. 6B, Mr. Kirven.
Yes, sir. I move for approval at second reading, an ordinance to amend an agreement for the development of a joint county industrial and business park, 2010 park, of Anderson and Greenville Counties so as to enlarge the park, Project CHQ 1.
All right. All in favor of adoption at second reading, please say aye.
Aye.
The opposed?
Opposed.
Okay. The ayes have it. 6B, ordinance is adopted at second reading. 6C, please.
Yes, sir. I move for approval at second reading, an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax agreement binding between Greenville County, South Carolina, and South Point Commerce Center LLC with respect to certain economic development property in the county whereby such property will be subject to certain payments in lieu of taxes, including the provision of certain special source credits and other matters related there, too.
All right. All those in favor of adoption at second reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Opposed.
The ayes have it. It's adopted at second reading. 6D, please.
Yes, sir. I move for approval at second reading, an ordinance to amend agreement for the development of a joint county industrial and business park, 2010 park, of Anderson and Greenville Counties so as to enlarge the park, Project CHQ 2.
All right. All those in favor of adoption at 6D, at second reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Opposed.
The ayes have it. 6D is adopted at second reading. 6E?
I move for approval at second reading, an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax agreement binding between Greenville County, South Carolina, and South Point Commerce Center LLC with respect to certain economic development property in the county whereby such property will be subject to certain payments in lieu of taxes, including the provision of certain special source credits and other matters related there, too.
All those in favor of adoption at second reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Opposed.
The ayes have it. 6E is adopted at second reading. 6F?
I move for approval at second reading, an ordinance to amend the, an agreement for the development of a joint county industrial and business park, 2010 park, of Anderson and Greenville Counties so as to enlarge the park, Project CHQ 4.
All those in favor of adoption at second reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Opposed.
The ayes have it. 6F is adopted at second reading. 6G?
I move for approval at second reading, an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax agreement binding between Greenville County, South Carolina, and South Point Commerce Center LLC with respect to certain economic development property in the county whereby such property will be subject to certain payments in lieu of taxes, including the provision of certain special source credits and other matters related there, too.
All right. All those in favor of adoption at second reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Opposed.
The ayes have it. 6G is adopted at second reading. 6H?
Yes, sir. GH. I move for approval at second reading, an ordinance to amend an agreement for the development of a joint county industrial and business park, 2010 park, of Anderson and Greenville Counties so as to enlarge the park, Project CHQ 5.
All right. All those in favor of adoption at second reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Opposed.
The ayes have it. 6H is adopted at second reading. 6I?
I move for approval at second reading, an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax agreement binding between Greenville County, South Carolina, and South Point Commerce Center LLC with respect to certain economic development property in the county whereby such property will be subject to certain payments in lieu of taxes, including the provision of certain special source credits and other matters related there, too.
All right. All those in favor of adoption at second reading, please say aye. Those opposed?
Opposed.
The ayes have it. 6I is adopted. 6J?
I move for approval at second reading, an ordinance to amend an agreement for the development of a joint county industrial and business park, 2010 park, of Anderson and Greenville Counties so as to enlarge the park, Project CHQ 6.
All right. All those in favor of adoption of the ordinance at second reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Opposed.
The ayes have it. 6J is adopted. 6K?
Yes, sir. One moment, please. Okay, that concludes the CHQs. 6K is Project Double Eagle. I move for approval at second reading, an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax agreement binding between Greenville County, South Carolina, and an entity or entities identified by the county for the time being as Project Eagle 1, including any related or affiliated entities and any sponsor affiliates with respect to certain economic development property in the county whereby such property will be subject to certain payments in lieu of taxes, including the provision of certain special source credits and other matters related there, too.
All right. All those in favor of adoption of 6K at second reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. The ordinance is adopted at second reading. 6L?
Yes, sir. I move for approval at second reading, an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax agreement binding between Greenville County, South Carolina, and an entity or entities identified by the county for the time being as Project Double Eagle 2, including and any related affiliated entities and sponsor affiliates, affiliates with respect to certain economic development property in the county whereby such property will be subject to certain payments in lieu of taxes, including the provision of certain special source credits and other matters related there, too.
All right. All those in favor of adoption at second reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. 6L is adopted at second reading. 6M, Project Strong.
Yes, sir. I move for approval at second reading, an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax agreement binding between Greenville County, South Carolina, and a company known to the county at this time as Project Strong 2, 2024, with respect to certain economic development property in the county whereby such property will be subject to certain payments in lieu of taxes, including the provision of certain special source credits and other matters related there, too.
All right. All those in favor of adoption at second reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. 6M is adopted at second reading. 6N, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. I move for approval at second reading, an ordinance to amend an agreement for the development of a joint county industrial and business park, 2010 park, of Anderson and Greenville Counties so as to enlarge the park, Project Strong.
All right. All those in favor of adoption at second reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. 6N is adopted at second reading. 6O, Project Blackbird.
I move for approval at second reading, an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax agreement binding between Greenville County, South Carolina, and Project Blackbird with respect to certain economic development property in the county whereby such property will be subject to certain payments in lieu of taxes, including the provision of certain special source credits and other matters related there, too.
All those in favor of adoption at second reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. 6O is adopted at second reading. 6P, General Electric.
Yes, sir. I move for approval at second reading, an ordinance authorizing pursuant to Chapter 44 of Title 12, South Carolina Code of Laws 1976, as amended the execution and delivery of a partial assignment assumption and bifurcation agreement, and amended and restated 1999 fee agreement binding between Greenville County, South Carolina, and GE Gas Turbines Greenville LLC, and amended and restated 1999 fee agreement binding between Greenville County, South Carolina, and General Electric Company. All agreements with respect to the division and bifurcation of that certain agreement, fee agreement, and by in between Greenville County, South Carolina, and General Electric Company dated November 1st, 1999, as amended on June 1st, 2024, and November 3rd, 2009, and other matters related there, too.
All right. All those in favor of adoption of the ordinance at second reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. The ordinance is adopted at second reading. 6Q, General Electric.
I move for adoption at second reading, an ordinance authorizing pursuant to Chapter 44, Title 12, South Carolina Code of Laws 1976, as amended the execution and delivery of a partial assignment assumption and bifurcation agreement, as amended and restated in 2014 fee agreement, excuse me, binding between Greenville County, South Carolina, and GE Gas Turbines Greenville LLC, and an amended and restated 2014 fee agreement binding between Greenville County, South Carolina, and General Electric Company. All agreements with respect to the division and bifurcation of that certain 2014 fee agreement binding between Greenville County, South Carolina, General Electric Company, and GE Gas Turbines Greenville LLC, and other matters related there, too.
All those in favor of adoption of the ordinance at second reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. 6Q is adopted at second reading. 6R, Project Constellation.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval at second reading, an ordinance authorizing and approving, one, the execution and delivery of a second amendment to an existing fee in lieu of tax and incentive agreement between Greenville County, South Carolina, and a company identified for the time being as Project Constellation to provide for, under certain circumstances, certain additional special source revenue credits in connection with additional investment in certain manufacturing and related facilities in the county, and two, other matters related there, too. Mr. Chairman, at this, at the request of the company, I move to refer this item back to the Finance Committee so they can finalize things before they proceed.
All right. All those in favor of sending this back to Finance, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. That'll go back to committee. 6S, Project Bolt.
Yes, sir. I move for approval at second reading, an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax and special source credit agreement binding between Greenville County, South Carolina, and a company known to the county at this time as Project Bolt with respect to certain economic development property in the county whereby such property will be subject to certain payments in lieu of taxes, including the provision of certain special source credits and other matters related there, too.
All right. All those in favor of adoption at second reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. 6S is adopted at second reading. Item 6T, Greenville Anderson Multi-County Industrial Business Park.
Yes, sir. I move for approval at second reading, an ordinance to amend an agreement for the development of a joint county industrial and business park, 2010 park, of Anderson and Greenville Counties so as to enlarge the park, Project Bolt.
All right. All those in favor of adoption of the ordinance at second reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. The ordinance is adopted at second reading. 6U, Greater Greenville Sanitation District.
Mr. Chairman, I move for adoption at second reading, an ordinance finding that the Greater Greenville Sanitation District, South Carolina, may issue not exceeding $34 million general obligation bonds, authorizing the Greater Greenville Sanitation Commission as the governing body of the Greater Greenville Sanitation District, South Carolina, to issue such bonds, providing for the publication of notice of said finding and authorization, and providing for other matters related there, too.
All right. You've heard the motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Fant, Dr. Fant?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We've heard the concerns with regards to Greater Greenville Sanitation, and considering that 60% of Greater Greenville Sanitation is in District 25, I would ask that we, not to be a Debbie Downer, but we move it forward, but at the same time, we allow for amendments at third reading. And I would ask all of my colleagues that have parts of Greater Greenville Sanitation in their districts to talk with the, the director and the board to make sure there's some kind of consensus on what we can do going forward. All right.
Just a point of order, or, I don't know why I did that. I'm so sorry.
You're out of order.
With regard to if we, if somebody does want to put third reading on that, you will need to move to amend the ordinance to allow for third reading and then pass it as amended.
And it has to be in writing, correct?
The amendments-
Amendments do-
The amendments want to be in writing at third, I mean, the, yes, whatever amendment somebody wants to introduce, that's correct. But we will need to go through that formality if we're going to do that here. I'm not suggesting y'all do it, I'm just letting you know.
All right. So the-
The motion would be to amend the-
Allow amendments at-
At third reading.
Okay.
Yeah.
All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it. Amendments are allowed at third reading. Mr. Juvalakis? All right.
That's, that's good. Thank you.
Okay.
Now we have to move at second reading.
Need to move to approve, or unless you're not ready, y'all may be still debating.
Okay.
But at some point, you'll need to approve it as amended.
As amended, okay. Any other questions or comments on this motion, on this ordinance?
So, we're moving forward now to third reading, and in third reading, we're allowed to make amendments to the ordinance, proposed ordinance.
Correct. They need to be in writing. Yep. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions on this ordinance? All right. All those in favor of adoption of the ordinance as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
The ayes have it. We'll move to third reading on that. 6V, Pickens Greenville Multi-County Industrial Business Park Agreement?
Chairman, as per my notice to the clerk, I need to recuse myself.
Okay.
Ready to proceed, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I move for approval at second reading, an ordinance to develop a joint, jointly owned and operated industrial business park in conjunction with Pickens County pursuant to South Carolina Code of Laws 1976, Section 1, excuse me, Section 4-1-170, and so forth, as amended such industrial and business park to be, at the time of its initial development, geographically located in Pickens County, and to include certain property located at the intersection of Highway 123 and 124, to provide for a written agreement between Pickens County, with Pickens County, providing for the expenses of the park, the percentage of revenue application, and the distribution of fees in lieu of tax, ad valorem tax, and matters related there, too.
All right. All those in favor of adoption of the ordinance at second reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Someone will-
I could get, Mr. Chairman, I got to recuse myself on the next one for my notice. Thank you.
Let me just say this before we start. I know we have some individuals that have an interest in this property that wanted to speak tonight. I'm sorry that our rules don't allow that, but your comments have been circulated by your council member, and we've heard that. And I think he's got a motion on this amendment once, once Mr. Kirven reads that one. 6W, sale of county-owned property.
Did we vote on the 6V yet?
Yes, we did.
Okay, I'm sorry. Sale of county-owned property on Chapman Grove Road. This is coming from the Roads and Public Works.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
But I've got the script, Ms. Seaman's not here, and I'll be happy to-
I'm sorry about that.
To present this on the-
Go ahead and, yeah, go ahead and take that one.
I move for approval at second reading, an ordinance to authorize the sale of county-owned approximately 5.3-acre parcel of real property located on Chapman Grove Road, Pelzer, and to authorize the chairman of county council and the county administrator to execute appropriate deeds and agreements.
All right. Mr. Bradley?
I would like to move to put this on hold.
Okay. All those in favor of holding this, please say aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it. We'll hold this till the next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight. Mr. Mitchell, I mistakenly punted W to Mr. Kirven. You're vice chair of Public Works. Do you want to do the next two, or do you want to have? Okay, would you mind doing the next two?
Let's proceed then.
So the next one is the transfer of county-owned parks, Point Set Park, Gateway Park, and Trailblazer Park.
Yes, sir. I move for approval at second reading, an ordinance authorizing and approving the transfer of ownership and operation of Point Set Park, Gateway Park, and Trailblazer Park to the city of Traveler's Rest, and to authorize the execution of deeds and other documents and agreements related there, too.
All right. All those in favor of adoption-
Mr. Chairman, I wanted to make a motion to, for clarification or amendment, I guess it would be.
Okay.
By the way, we have the greatest mayor in the world over in this, where this property's located. Going back to the comments I had made last time, I just, I spoke with the county attorney about this, too, and I wanted to ask for a friendly amendment to take out the word, or the term, open space, so it would just be recreation would be left there. The open space, I'm not comfortable with it going- The open space, um, I'm not comfortable with it going forward into other administrations uh, in the distant future where, um, that could be part of a development, open space. And if we just used the term residential, I think it would be the meaning of my previous, uh, comments.
And, Mr. Chairman, I think what he's referring to too is also referred to, I think, in the IGA and the ordinance as green space, but that's the, that's the provision that I think Mr. Shaw is talking about.
Okay.
So, it specifically, in the last whereas of the ordinance, uh, we would strike the term green space and, and, um, and that's simply it, to strike green space and, uh, strike through it.
So, how are we able to, um, is that a, are we amending an IGA with this motion?
Be amending the ordinance, and then the ordinance would speak to the IGA.
Okay, can we do that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Where, where is it again, exactly?
It would be the last whereas in the ordinance, in the recitals at the beginning of the ordinance?
Yeah. I see it. It's right before the now, therefore, top of the last page.
Can you just read what it would be once your amendment, if, if your amendment is adopted, what it would, what it would say?
Yes. The last whereas would say, um, the parks will be maintained and used for recreational purposes only and that the deeds conveying park property will contain restrictions to ensure such use.
Okay. And that doesn't violate any of the IGA agreements that we have?
Well, we haven't signed an IGA agreement on this thing, so what it would do, though, is it would also, I mean, I'm assuming that the motion to amend would apply to the IGA as well, which has the same language in it.
Okay.
A friendly question, Mr. Shaw. Friendly, extremely friendly.
Yes.
What is your concern about green space in a park? By what, I mean, what else could it be other than green space? The oil would be the danger.
Well-
And that's a friendly question.
Yeah, yeah, no, I understand. It's a good question and I, I was prepared to answer that, but I don't want to go on and on. Um, the concern would be, I think they're allowed to sell up to twenty percent of this land. And there are developable lands adjacent to this, these parks. And if in the future, I, the current administration is great, but in the future, somewhere down the line, this would be open space. This could be part of the open space of, uh, residential development. It might, uh, that term, open space.
Green space?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
It's the same term used in all of our development ordinances.
All right.
I have one question, not about the amendment, just in general. Does this revert back to the county if, if the, is this any reversion on these? Or is this a full?
I'm sorry, Mr. Harrison.
Is there any reversion on these if the, if the cities were to sell? Are they, they're fee simple city properties from, if we pass this?
My understanding is, yeah, it's fee so, it'll be a fee simple transaction.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions on Mr. Shaw's amendment? All right. All those in favor of adoption of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Uh, the ordinance is amended. Now, um, the question is adoption of the ordinance as amended. All those in favor of adoption of the ordinance as amended at second reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Uh, six, uh, six Y?
Final one, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I move for approval at second reading and ordinance authorizing and directing the negotiation and execution of a lease with the state of South Carolina, excuse me, South Carolina, of a portion of county-owned property located one-eighteen McGee Street, Greenville, South Carolina, two-nine-six-oh-one, consisting of a portion of the building formerly known as the Juvenile Detention Facility.
All right. All those in favor of adoption of the ordinance at second reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Uh, administrators report.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, I do have a couple of things this evening. Uh, I wanted to let you know the groundbreaking of the Sparkville County Pat Reesaw Center will be held on December fifth at eleven a.m. Greenville County continues to work closely with them as they move to this new chapter of having their own animal care facility. Construction is expected to take six to eight months. Animal, our animal care staff is also excited to announce a partnership with Clemson University, its new College of Veterinary Medicine. Clemson staff assisted with our recent TNR event here in Greenville and will continue to work with us on events in the future. We are establishing a shelter medicine clerkship rotation and internship opportunities at our shelter for the fourth-year students and recent grads. Greenville County Animal Care Staff will be attending the vet school's ribbon-cutting ceremony later this month. Uh, our Citizens Academy, um, as you know, our inaugural class of eleven citizens graduated last week after seven-month program where they were exposed to departments all across the county, as far north as Pleasant Ridge and south as Landville and everywhere in between. We looked, we took them to the detention center, Sheriff's Advanced Training Center, Animal Care, McAllister Square, Holton Road, et cetera. They were able to hear presentations from staff, meet with elected officials, and tour facilities. We're looking forward to a new class in twenty-twenty-five, so start thinking about who you would like to put in there. And I'd like to, um, point, or put a thanks out to Lindsay Sloan and Nicole Wood who organized all these individuals and, uh, got everything, uh, coordinated as we move through the program. And then we'll also launch Greenville, uh, student partnership with Greenville County Schools in the Chamber. Uh, we have eighteen high school students who are currently working with, with eight departments, including the Landfill, Animal Care, Vehicle Service Center, Property Management, IS, Roads and Bridges, to offer opportunities to learn job skills, training, and potential careers within Greenville County. These students will stay with us until February when the next class will start. So, these are high school students that, uh, are taking a look at our operations and hopefully will keep some of them after graduation.
Let me just take a, kind of take a real personal, point of personal privilege. I just want to thank staff, the, uh, CGA committee worked hard to put that, that curriculum together for the Citizens Academy, I guess, last year, and, um, it was very well received. Whoever I talked to that was in the program, that y'all did a fantastic job with that and hopefully that, uh, continues and grows in the, um, in the years to come. So, I just want to thank staff for the work they put in. It was very well received from what I heard from the people involved. So, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. All right. Uh, there being no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. We're adjourned.